Mission, would please have roll call my plan.
Mayor Segada.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Packed house tonight, like to see that. Couple of announcements here. All city offices will be closed on Friday, April 19th in observance of Good Friday. We have a notice of a potential quorum. A quorum of city commissioners may attend the New Mexico Municipal League District 3 meeting in Las Vegas. That is tomorrow, April 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's at the Plaza Hotel. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 23rd, 6:00 p.m., here in the Chambers. And at this time, we have six proclamations tonight that we are going to be reading. And the first one, we've got some young ladies here that did an outstanding job down at the state competition, so we've got a proclamation. I can get it out here. I've got a proclamation for you that we'd like to present to you. Celebration of Champions Raton High School Cheer Day, April 9th, 2019. Whereas the Raton High School cheerleaders and their coaches, Mrs. Linda Ortiz, Randall Herrera, and Jennifer Portillo competed in the state cheerleader competition held in Albuquerque and came home as state class AAA champions. And whereas the Raton High School cheerleaders participated in competition with six schools from around the state of New Mexico and emerged first place winners in game day cheer, cheer with music, and AAA state champions. And whereas cheerleading is a sport that takes dedication, athleticism, patience, perfection, a commitment to teamwork and discipline. A cheer must, a cheer team must be able to have the ability for elite stunting, dancing, tumbling, voice projection, showmanship, creativity, ability to learn cheers and chants, and to be able to interact with the crowd and teams. And whereas their dedication and perseverance as a young team was proven at the 2019 NMAA cheerleading competition. And whereas the Raton varsity cheerleaders play a key role at Raton High School by promoting school spirit, leadership, sportsmanship, and encourage and support all teams and individuals to make a commitment to excellence. And whereas the Raton cheerleaders most importantly maintain high academic standards to participate as a cheerleader, now therefore do I, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim, April 9th, 2019, as celebration of champions, RHS Cheer Day, in the city of Raton and surrounding communities, and ask the people of our communities to express pride in these young athletes and thank them for a job well done by bringing honor to their school in the state cheerleader competition. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this ninth day, April 2019. Congratulations. Congratulations. Appreciate you. Keep up the good work.
And I would like to just, I would just like to say a few things. On behalf of Randall and Jennifer and our cheer team, I would just like to thank you for recognizing us because these young ladies and gentlemen worked really hard all year. And they put in a lot of time and it is so wonderful that the city of Raton honors them for all their hard work and their accomplishment. So we thank you so much for doing this for these young ladies and for our team. We truly appreciate you honoring us.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you so much. You, you might understand that if you want to leave the meeting now because it's going to be a long meeting, you should have walked up to the lead.
It is a city's class.
There goes the crowd.
Okay. That's it. Job well done.
I think we're the only ones stuck here through the whole thing.
That's right. Unfortunately, unfortunately. Okay, proclamation number two. Didn't know they were back to back, have to catch my breath here. Raton Public Service 100th Anniversary. Proclamation, Raton Public Service Company 100th Anniversary. Whereas Raton Public Service Company was incorporated under the laws of the state of New Mexico and filed with the New Mexico State Corporation Commission on April 22nd, 1919. The original incorporators were J.J. Shuler, W.H. Bone, William Arkel, S.A. Wiseman, and C.A. Whiden. And whereas Raton Public Service Company was organized for the purpose of acquiring the properties, rights, and franchise of the Raton Electric Light and Power Company, the privately owned electric utility located at 444 South First Street for the sum of And whereas on May 20th, 1926, a new plant consisting of two 750 kilowatt units was constructed on property acquired from the AT&amp;SF Railroad and was completed in January 1927 at a cost of $135,000. And whereas from 1926 to 1946, Raton Public Service extended distribution lines and installed additional units during this time to meet increasing demand. In 1936, an additional building was constructed, House Unit Number 3, which could generate 1,750 kilowatts. Units 1 and 2 were retired in 1946, and Unit 4 was added with a generation capacity of four megawatts. And whereas in 1929, the longstanding tradition of decorating downtown Raton for the Christmas season was started, and in August of 1931, the Raton sign atop Goat Hill was brightly lit after being officially presented to the city by the Kawanas Club. RPS has continued to provide power to the site as well as repair and maintain the sign that shines bright for all to see. And whereas in 1960, Unit 5 was installed and was a state of the art steam turbine with pneumatic controls and generation capabilities of 7.5 megawatts. This unit ran for 46 years and close to 365,000 hours, but in 2006 was retired due to age, limited parts, coal supply, and regulations. And whereas Raton Public Service installed a 4.5-megawatt GE Genbacher natural gas powered generation unit in 2017 and is used in the event of an emergency. And whereas, RPS currently employs 19 full-time positions between business office operations, line distribution, and power plant operations, and is governed by a board consisting of five directors and one advisory board member. The mission of the RPS board of directors and employees has remained the same throughout the company's 100 years of existence. We take pride in our company and take seriously the fiscal responsibility of providing the most reliable electric service and economical energy rates to the city of Raton and its ratepayers. Now therefore do I, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, urge all citizens to participate in this milestone celebration and thank the Raton Public Service Company for their 100 years of exemplary service. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be fixed this ninth day of April, 2019. One of you about the once here.
We're 100 years old.
One of you guys, you gotta put your hands on this. Alrighty. Congratulations, guys.
I can't believe you got all of that verbally challenged.
I can. I was just sad there was no mention of the word "son" on there.
Now, thank you guys very much for always being a part of RPS and doing this proclamation for our 100 years. And I know what's dear, near and dear on April 18th is also National Linemen's Day, so we want to take an opportunity, just since we're here, to recognize the linemen that are out there in the cold and the wind and whatever weather might throw at them, but keeping our electricity on and working to keep things going, so.
Absolutely. We appreciate you guys. And the big party's the 22nd, correct?
Yes. Yes, I want to invite everyone, April 22nd, at the convention center from 1 to 4. So everyone's invited, please join us. There's going to be a lot of fun things to do. We've got demonstrations and tours of the plants and photographs and displays that, you know, explain the history throughout the last 100 years, so it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun.
Cool.
So please join us.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The same thing applies to you guys as to the cheerleaders. If you want to stay and listen to us.
No, we don't.
You don't have to tell us.
Come on. You're gonna leave us here with Terry and that.
I wonder if they're gonna tell me the same thing.
Are you 102?
I'm a villain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next proclamation up is Fair Housing Month.
Proclamation, Fair Housing Month. Whereas fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans, whereas the principle of fair and equal housing is not equal only to a national law and policy, but fundamental human entitlement. And whereas all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means. And whereas people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or familiar status. And whereas we must, as individuals, assure equal access to housing for all in our communities. And whereas, New Mexico acknowledges the importance of assuring care and equal treatment to all citizens. Now therefore, I do I, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, do hereby proclaim locally the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month, and urge all citizens to participate in appropriate activities to commemorate this event. And witness whereas, I have here and to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of April 2019. Signed, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor.
It's a very job, but somebody's gotta do it. We love what we do over there and appreciate you guys very much.
I knew it would be great job.
Thank you, Terry. And next up is a proclamation for Equal Pay Day.
And let me just say before I read it that we do look forward to the day where it is so commonplace that proclamations are not needed. However, Equal Pay Day, April 2nd, 2019. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of Equal Pay Act entitled, seven of the Civil Rights Act women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay, differentials, and whereas according to statistics released in 2016 by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in 2015 earned only 80% of the earnings of a year-round full-time working man, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to a January 2002 report released by the General Accounting Office, the investigative arm of Congress, women managers in seven of 10 industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And whereas according to an analysis of data in over 300 classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in 2001, women earn less in every occupation classified for each for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women. Examples given are cashiers, retail sales, registered nurses, teachers, and speech-language pathologists. Whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination according to the U.S. Department of Education analysis reporting that after controlling for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members earn nearly 9% less than their male counterparts. And whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 2nd, symbolizes the time this year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore do I, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2019 as Equal Pay Day in Raton, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor forces, and further encourage business to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Raton, Mexico, to be affixed this ninth day of April 2019. Signed, James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of Raton.
Telecommunicators Week, April 14th through the 20th, 2019. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of emergency services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the city of Raton Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the city of Raton telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore does James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019, Telecommunicators Week. And the city of Raton in honor of our telecommunicators whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, and witness whereof, he has hereto set his hand and seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of April 2019.
No, we don't. We don't have anybody. We'll make sure that they get it.
Alrighty. And our final proclamation is Comcast Cares Day. Proclamation, Comcast Cares Day, May 4th, 2019. Whereas Comcast Cares Day is a national initiative in which Comcast employees and their families volunteer their time to perform a community service project. And whereas this year's Comcast Cares Days will happen both locally and nationally on Saturday, May 4th, 2019. And whereas Comcast will partner with the Raton Public Schools on beautification of the Raton High School campus. And whereas Comcast and its employees are truly committed to the communities they serve, not only through their annual event but year-round. Therefore do James Neil Segada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim, May 4th, 2019, as Comcast Cares Day. And further extend our thanks to the employees of Comcast and their families for their volunteer efforts. And witness therefore does, he hereto sets his hand seal and cause the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of March, 2019. James Neil Segada Jr. I'm gonna give you a few more guys. Make makeup stand.
I just wanted to take a chance to thank Joe and Comcast as well. Last year, the city of Raton was lucky enough to be the recipient of the Comcast Cares Day. Joe, along with a group of probably close to 100 volunteers.
206.
206.
Wow.
Assisted us in painting the entire outfield wall, dugouts at Gabrali Field. We worked at the girls' field, they built helmet holders for the ladies softball team, purchased and applied seat to our ball fields. And Comcast Cares Days has been around for a long time. One of the coolest socially responsible corporate programs I've ever seen. They get great participation, and every time I've seen them do an event, we never get great weather, they always show up in masses, but you always leave at the end of the day with a tremendous result, and it's cool for the whole community. You see people that you live in the same town with every day that you haven't seen in years at these events, but just having their local presence was great for us. As a school board member, we appreciate that they're coming to help us this year at the schools, but I just want to thank Joe and Comcast for the awesome things they do because it's really appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it. Alrighty. That wraps up the proclamations. At this time, we'll take comments from the general public. Anyone wishing to address?
I have one comment. You guys do a great job, and I'm gonna go eat supper.
Okay. Thanks, Terry. Enjoy it.
I just want to think, I'd like to issue a challenge to the county commissioners. I'd like to see all of you folks present for the fourth for Comcast Cares Day. Not, you don't have to show up for the whole time, but half an hour, an hour show up time just to lend a hand in your community and spread the word, get some of your families out there, because the more volunteers we get, Comcast doesn't only support the funds to do the project, but we also match a monetary amount for every volunteer form that we get signed, we give back to the community as a dollar amount. So the more volunteers we get, the more funds we'll be able to give back to the community schools.
Cool.
Great.
We'll have to take you up on that.
Okay.
Alrighty. Any other comments at this time? Okay, let's move into the business section. Item 6A, approval of the March 26th, 2019 regular commission meeting minutes. Have the minutes in your packet. Got time to read them.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2019 minutes.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B. Public hearing, fiscal year 2020 budget hearing. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet you have some guidance, recent guidance dated March 1st, 2019, from the Department of Finance Administration in regard to the fiscal year 1920-2020 budget preparation and submission. So this would kick off that process of preparation of an interim budget and then ultimately a final budget. DFA does have oversight over our municipal budget, all municipalities and local agencies, and so they've offered the guidance for you here for your review, and there is some information in the guidance there that will be important for us to observe and discuss as we go through the process. Now, I think the important part of this process is really, as we say frequently, the public input. Really appreciate that input from the public. The public, if they have some, something they would like to communicate to the commission in the process of preparation of the budget, they can do that a number of ways. They can come to one of our numerous budget workshops that will begin tonight. They can submit written comments. They can give us a phone call and give us their comments over the phone. So there are a number of ways that people can do that. That's certainly an element of our process here, beginning tonight. Now, I'll go back to our financial report that the commission had considered at the last meeting, and one element that we will need to discuss and keep in mind is primarily what drives the revenue side of a municipal budget is grocery receipts tax distributions that comes to us from New Mexico Tax and Rev. And during most of the current fiscal year, we have seen a significant decrease from the same month in previous years of grocery receipts tax distributions. So that has been a pretty steady, consistent decrease from previous years throughout this year, and it's hard to predict whether that trend is going to remain, whether we see a bounce back to some of our previous levels. But that does create some difficulty in consideration of a new budget, because while this commission has been very diligent about building a reserve, and we do have some reserves, largely what you see in the existing budget, and we'll see this in an interim budget that we put together, would be costs related to personnel. And we'll get a better number for you, but I would say that personnel costs to municipality are probably 70% or greater of our expenditure side of the budget. And you'll notice in the guidance from DFA that DFA cautions that adopting and applying a formal policy, or they recommend to you that you adopt and apply a formal policy that strictly disallows recurring expenditures from cash balances and non-recurring revenues. And so that's something that we will have to struggle with as we discuss this budget, because the city of Raton offers a broad array of services. A lot of those are related to personnel costs. We don't have a lot of extra employees around that we can continue our level of service and reduce our personnel schedule. Actually, in past years, over the past 10 years, we're cutting it very close on the personnel that we retain to provide the level of service that we currently provide. So this is a challenge that we're going to face going forward in talking about the budget. And with that, Mayor and Commissioner, we have lots of particular things to talk about, but I would give you that perspective on the budget. That's unusual from our commencement of this process in the previous years, but that's a significant challenge that we face currently.
This is a public hearing regarding the upcoming 2020 budgets, and this time we will take any comments from those present, as well as I would address the commissioners, that if they have any comments or questions for Mr. Berry, to do so at this time.
I have a question as the, as things move forward to increase minimum wage and the wage starts to climb, how is this municipality going to handle that?
And Mayor and Commissioner, I will let you know that the governor has signed a bill regarding minimum wage. It covers increases in minimum wage over a number of years. I think that in the current budget, it'll have a minimal effect on city But as we move forward in those later years covered under the bill, we will see an impact. One of the things that we see in this bill is, like, believe, and, and, and part of the process is really understanding a lot of the legislation that has been enacted. We'll, we'll talk about how that's going to happen. But as I understand, there will be an automatic 3% increase at some point in minimum wage. Now, as far as city staff and our municipal budgets, we have not seen a 3% increase for many years at City of Raton. And so that is a significant challenge. This is a, it's a significant burden, I would say, and we'll, we'll be challenged, but that looks like that's going to be the requirement, something that we will have to, we'll have to discuss and realize as we go along. I don't anticipate in this budget that we'll see a significant impact, other than what we just discussed.
The, I have a question on the healthcare. And it's projected that the healthcare will be rising substantially over the next few years, and that'll, that'll affect our budget of how we have to disperse it.
Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner Chavez, I would tell you that we know currently that our health insurance costs will rise by 5%. That's the, the number that we get. That is a significant benefit that the City of Raton offers to employees. And we will talk about significant dollars in the budget to cover that 5% increase. That, that's one that we, is variable. We don't know as we're getting into this time what that might be. Now we know that it is going to be 5%. And we know that that's significant. And so there are a couple of those things that we'll talk about as we go through the process that are variable in the budget, both on the, the revenue side or the expenditure side. But that's, that's a big one. And 5% is a, results in a lot of dollars.
It's huge. Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I know the, the minimum wage is something not only the City of Raton has equipped, but all of the people that are in business here in, in the town. I've kind of thought it might happen last year, so we and starve people at the senior in our program to that $9.50 area. We're not all there, but significantly, but I think it's, you just, like Mr. Berry said, we've got to start preparing, planning, and see where we can get there.
Exactly.
Mayor and Commissioner, if we could do this, I would like to call on the city clerk to maybe talk about the schedule generally.
Absolutely.
As far as what happens from this point on with budget and the various deadlines that we're looking at. Michaeline, if you don't mind addressing that.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioner, so at our next meeting, we will do another public hearing on April 23rd. We will be in the process of distributing the budget worksheets to our department heads. Anytime we have a 60-day legislative session, we start this process a little bit later than we normally would in a fiscal year. The meeting that you're attending tomorrow, or the district meeting with the municipal league, will be very informative. And so there will be a lot of information that the city manager will bring back to me as well. Other things that could impact our budget would be our insurance dividend credits. So that's something the municipal league self-insurance fund will go over with you tomorrow. So we don't like any surprises there because if we're not eligible for a dividend credit, we generally get the one for workman's comp because we have an 80% compliance requirement for safety training. Generally, we've always met that. But they do have another component to that, and that's a dividend credit for the premiums if our losses, it's based on a three-year, it goes back, a three-year look-back period. If our losses exceeded our premiums, then we would forego that dividend credit. And so that is something that we split between RPS, water, and ourselves. But that could be close to a $25,000 impact for the City of Raton. So we would essentially be foregoing a discount. So those are the kind of things that I'll be interested in looking at in addition to the health insurance increases, minimum wage increases. Nothing ever goes down. So, so we kind of gather all that information and we'll factor that in along with our revenue projections that we come up with. As you know, we look at any significant projects that are going on within the city limits. And so we kind of base our grocery receipts projections on that. We're not really aware of too many large projects this year, not anything to the magnitude of like when we had the South Interchange and the jail project. Those were significant. So we'll be putting some of that information together for you as well as how we come up with those projections. And then hopefully, I, I don't know if we'll have a draft. If we do have a draft by the April 23rd meeting, it'll be a fairly rough draft. But generally, by the first meeting in May, we would need to have a pretty good working draft. We could look at possibly scheduling some workshops if we needed to do that, either maybe before commission meeting. We've done that in the past. But by the second meeting in May, we do have to approve the interim budget, and I have to have that submitted to DFA by June 1st. So that's kind of the timeline that we're working with.
Any questions for Michaeline?
Come here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else see any questions at this time? All right, seeing that, we'll move on. Item C, deliberate enact on memorandum of agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Country Club. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, we put this back on the agenda as a discussion and potentially an action item for the city commission. And this is a result of a request from Raton Country Club for consideration of funding through non-promotional lodgers tax for improvements at the course. So we had talked about this at a previous meeting, and in the interim time, I've worked with Mr. Barton in regard to some terms. We do have a memorandum of agreement in your packet. However, we have worked on this agreement really throughout today. And I'm going to call Mr. Barton forward to talk about his review and, and the review of the, the course board. And I think that we are looking at, if you want to consider approval of this tonight, maybe a little bit of a dynamic process where we do some wordsmithing on the fly. And so while you have a draft of that agreement, I would think that we would maybe talk about some revisions to that draft as we go. But you do see the, an attempt at a, an agreement as far as the responsibilities of the parties related to this request. As far as the funding amount in the agreement, you see a blank space, which I will let you, the commission, and Mr. Barton representing the club discuss. But I think in the past, we have discussed some guidelines as far as what the request might constitute. The club has submitted some quotations to you on irrigation system components. You have that in your packet. And with that, Mayor, I would ask if we could ask Mr. Barton to come up and maybe give us the, the club's perspective on where we're at with the agreement and as written and the requests in general.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come back here. So Devin Barton, I'm here on behalf of the Raton Country Club and Municipal Golf Course. And of course, as Scott was saying, yeah, we, we are back to talk a little bit further about the irrigation system. And so just as a reminder, we do have an ongoing and rather strong relationship with the city as far as the water and how that has worked in the past. We do take that reclaimed water from the city and distribute it onto the golf course. And, and due to the generosity of the city, we've, we've been able to really create a very nice natural feature out there that is, you know, the gem of the city, in my opinion. We want to continue that, and in fact, we'd like to expand upon it because we do believe that this could not only enhance folks' lives here in the City of Raton, but also attract people from outside the area. And so a part of the program here would be that upon our request and acceptance of the request, the things that we are going to be doing for the community is, is offering a place to not only pull meetings in, but also be able to host weddings, be able to do other social functions that maybe we haven't quite focused on in the past like we'd like to. So I think it could be a, a revenue generating source. And ultimately, the, the second part of this is really to, to repay the lodgers tax board with some of the money that we think we can put heads in beds by offering sort of a stay and play opportunity out of the golf course. So the concept is very simple. We're, we're coming in here to get the irrigation fixed substantially. And in front of you, you've got some numbers that are, that are pretty hefty. You know, we're talking up in the potentially $50,000 range if we were to do 100%. Now, we never had the idea that we would come in here and ask the commission for 100% of that money. And in fact, if we end up getting nothing, the onus is still on the country club and the municipal golf course to come through to, to make those repairs. But certainly, in, in consideration of, of some help, we do believe that we'd like to be able to give back and, and promote tourism and get some heads in beds during the stay and play concept. So the stay and play concept would be that once we've got this golf course up and running and, and, and the, the irrigation system functioning on all cylinders, if you will, we believe that we can offer that to outside folks, have them come in here and with a receipt from hotels and motels around town, present that to us, and we will allow people to play the golf course for free. We believe that with a little bit of marketing effort on our part and in conjunction with potentially some of the promotional dollars, that we can make that happen outside of the area and pull some, some folks in here and really make this thing a go. So the request is for $20,000. And as you can see, that's a significant portion of the overall budget in terms of the quotes that we've gotten, okay? But it's certainly not all of it, and we, we certainly expect to pay our, our fair share, if not the bulk or the lion's share of, of those repairs out there. But certainly with your help, that, that would help get that fixed faster and, and allow us to, to bring those tourists in sooner is, is our thought process here. So if you've had a chance to read through this, there's a couple of things on here that, that kind of stand out to me. And I'd, I'd bring your eyes to item B on here on the MOA. And that, that statement there says, "The initial term of the MOA shall be from the date of the last approval through a term of 10 years." The concept being that we do believe that the repairs that we are going to make are going to last at least that long, if not longer. So, so the investment that you are making is in the future of the golf course and, of course, the agreement that we already have in place for a, a place to send that reclaimed water, okay? So that's important. I think when we're talking about infrastructure, you want to make a investment on something that's going to last. And this is certainly a, a timeframe that, that we'd feel comfortable making sure that this is going to go for. You'll see here on section B on, on page two, two there, the club hereby agrees to, and we've got 11 different line items there. We believe that we can not only abide by these, and, and these are really rules about being able to provide documentation, purchase order requirements, budgets, approvals, those kinds of things as we work through the process. Part of the challenge with the irrigation system is that a lot of this is underground, so we can't see exactly what the issues are. Once we dig them up, oh, there's the problem. Now we fix it, and it's at that point where we will be getting, hey, we need X, Y, and Z. We would then present that to the city for approval, get those repairs done as quickly as possible, get the, get the system completed, okay? But a lot of that outlines in detail what our, what our responsibilities are going to be as far as getting not only the parts, but also the labor and potentially even contract labor to, to help us out with this, okay? Number nine, I'll, I'll draw your eyes down to that particular item there, and you'll see that one of the big things that we think we can improve upon is we, we certainly have a disc golf course out there currently. And a little controversy about that is that we've been charging for that in the past for folks to come out there. And a concession in consideration of this money would be that we would allow our, our disc golfers to play for free like they can at other places, but this is going to be a much more unique environment. And because it is a little bit more unique environment, we may be able to add tournaments into this and, and generate some more cash that would then be paid back to the lodgers tax board, okay? Item number 10 there, you know, this kind of outlines the concept in terms of how we would like to see the stay and play work. One of the things that we would like to employ is, is the Center of Innovation, to have them partner with us on our website so that we can market this outside of the area of Raton and really start to pull those folks in from outside the area. And we believe that Center of Innovation has the capabilities of, of helping us do that, and not only doing that, but linking to our city website as well as our Raton Your Pass marketing concept. So this will be Raton Your Pass to Free Golf, okay? There are a couple of things in there. I, I would like to kind of limit this concept to hotels and motels. And you'll notice that partway through the sentence there, it talks about restaurants and other similar businesses. I'd like to omit that piece of it if we could, simply because what we are interested in is getting heads in beds, not having people play free golf for a coke.
Right.
Yes.
Now, what about, we don't have too many, but we do have at least one in breakfast. Would that be included?
Yes, we believe that that would not be an issue. Now, a couple of the other things that have come up, and we need to kind of work through this, and I, I'm not clear on exactly whether or not these folks pay lodgers tax, but the RV parks, I'm not sure if they do. If they do, we feel like anybody who's paying into lodgers tax probably should be able to, to present a receipt and, and play for free out there. I'm not sure if NRA pays into lodgers tax.
They do not. They're not in the city limits.
Okay. So that would be eliminated then.
And would it be, say you have three guests in the same hotel room, would they all three get to play for free?
Yeah, so the, the concept would be, again, yeah, if you've got, ideally, this would be a couple, right? And so if they present a room receipt, those two would play for free, no problem. What I, what we are not interested in is having one receipt and 16 people show up. So we're going to try to manage that as much as we can. Now, again, through the Center of Innovation, as well as our own efforts, the concept is going to be that we will actually begin to take that list of folks, match that up with the receipts, be able to track that for the commission as well as ourselves, and then be able to market back to those folks to get them as, as return players, okay? So within limits, we want it to be reasonable. It's got to be fair for them more, most importantly, but it's also going to be fair for the golf class. So as long as people aren't showing up with one receipt and 16 people to play, we're going to be open to, to making that work. One thing we were a little bit concerned about was item number 11 there. And, you know, certainly, I, I don't think anybody anticipates anything as far as mismanagement here, but it, it kind of sounds like if, if something were to happen, we'd be responsible for reimbursement, and we're kind of wanting to wordsmith that a little bit. Certainly would expect that any funding would be cut off, but as far as reimbursement goes, I'm not sure that the board was comfortable with that, so just kind of wanted to get a feel for everyone's take on that. But short of that, the rest of the agreement looks favorable as far as our board is concerned, and they've already given me approval to say, hey, let's go forward with this.
So I had talked to Devin, and then he subsequently was talking to his board today. And we anticipated, anticipated, you know, a little revision or a little wordsmithing here at the meeting, not typically something we would do, but we are in irrigation system season now. And so, you know, I think there's maybe a little timing element with this. And the, the comments that David, Devin had put forward, I mean, from the staff perspective, that's all good. We can make that work, absolutely. So I think there's a couple of things we can mark up in this, but I'll let you all ask your questions or make your comments, or we can kind of nail down the language here that we want to see on this.
I, I personally would like to see that.
I, I personally would like to see that item 11, that reimbursement taken out. I really would.
Say that's not a problem.
Because working up to that point, we're not going to say, okay, from last January, you owe us back this amount. That's already been allocated for running the golf course. So I wouldn't mind seeing that reimbursement removed from the item 11. It's up to the rest of the commission.
We can just scratch that.
Yeah, because it's my understanding, probably as, as you guys procure these items, that's when we'll be approving the money to go. And if something was, goes south from that point on, we just wouldn't purchase any more parts and have to work that.
I think the agreement would be terminated and I think we're comfortable with that. We just were a little bit concerned about having to pay that back if something went wrong.
I think back to 10, we talked about maybe scratching restaurants and similar businesses. So I think that would read by the portion of the public that supports hotels, motels, RV parks and bed and breakfast businesses. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Sounds good to me.
Devin, is the 10-year period, did you say we could agree?
Well, so the 10-year period, and I just want to kind of be clear on that. We, we're okay with the 10-year repairs as, as being part of the infrastructure. And we want to emphasize that this is not a short-term fix, but we really envision this as a long-term fix. One concern was that we're, we're not going to offer free hotels for 10 years, or free, free golf for 10 years, okay? So the concept being here that once we've given back $20,000 worth of free golf, we'd like to be done with that.
And that's our intent here too. We can, we can look at this language, but that is the intent of the, the agreement as written is that, you know, we would not exceed that value. It doesn't necessarily go 10 years. It just can be spread out through the term however the club sees as appropriate, but not to exceed the value of the agreement.
I have no problem.
But I can clean up the language if it's, if it's vague.
I've been going over this, talking to the board now. And I went over all these piece by piece and I came across the, and if I'm, I'm wrong, you can correct me. The five-year GPS with complimentary single pay was $11,000, that's a warranty?
Well, and so this, this is something that is certainly negotiable. So yes, one of the manufacturers, Rainbird in particular, has come to the table and offered a, a long-term extended warranty. So for that large price tag, and it's anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000 depending on how much time we want, yes, they, that is an option. I'm not sure that that's going to be the best place where our dollars are going to be best spent, okay? And in fact, I think what we'd like to do is put the money into the infrastructure and, and use their expertise as well as potentially their contractors to, to do this. And we may be able to get that warranty without paying for it upfront with a $15,000 check, if that makes sense.
It does, and that, and that concerned me as, as far as spending that much money on a, in five years from now. Because one of the questions that I wrote down to ask you tonight was, are you going to make this a long-term project so that we have a golf course for the next 10 or 15 years?
That's.
And that was one of the questions I was going to ask you, you answered that. The other thing was that the, is that the, that warranty, if something happens five years down there, let's address it at that point. Let's don't spend frivolously as I feel that warranty would be out there for monies.
Right, and I think, I think our board feels the same way. We felt like that was a little bit of a gouge on, on the manufacturer's part to try to get us to buy into a warranty that we may be able to get in a different way, simply by using their contractors rather than paying them for an upfront fee.
So how would the wording with number nine change is my question, if I have to discuss that?
And I apologize, I've had a, a number of different iterations of this, so I want to make sure that you.
We have the one that says reasonable and congenial manner.
I think we talked about scratching that word and, and put in something like free daily play or.
Free daily usage, okay, so.
Cost or something like.
Yeah, so scratching in a reasonable and congenial manner and replacing that with free daily usage. You know, because we do believe that that still has the ability to potentially drive revenue from a, from a tournament standpoint, the golf course will not take any of those revenues. But if they are able to get tournaments going, we're able to get heads in beds, we do believe that that money should come back to the commission first. And, and we are not interested in, in participating in the profits of, of a tournament other than maybe carts and refreshments. So that was kind of another concession in terms of, of being able to give back as quickly as we possibly could.
Well, I went back to the previous MOU that we had with them and where it stated that recompensate for the city equipment investment during the term of 15% for tournament fees collected. Personally, as, and I don't think that the disc golfers would care about a 15%.
No, but I, I would like to see the, I would like to see 100% of the money go back.
What you said makes it moot for that, for that part of the memorandum. They can come and play and then you get the sundries out of the.
Yeah, and in fact, we'd like to help them organize a, a tournament or two. We'd like to see some revenues generated and we'd like to see that money paid back to lodger's tax as quickly as possible. So, you know, it's a concession on our part in, in exchange for, for this money upfront.
Are you upfront with the fact that you could meet with the board of the, of the disc golf and you guys work out an amicable?
Absolutely, in fact, yeah, I, I made a couple of reaches out today to, to that side to make sure that we're going to sit down. I know that there's been a little bit of concern about moving the pins and I think we can work through that. That's not a, that's not a big issue. And then of course, the other thing was making sure that they were going to play for free on a daily basis. And then what were we going to do with tournament dues? And I think those three items were of concern. I think we've got a, a handshake at this point on, on what we're going to do moving forward.
Well, some of the golfers that approached me said, well, here I'm making a chip and here flies a frisbee. Well, that's common golf courtesy and golf etiquette. They just have to realize that you're, if they're playing heavy, you let them finish their ball before you come, you know, so you don't have any confrontation between either of the groups.
Right, the other thing that we're talking about doing is, is producing a brochure for the disc golfers in particular because there aren't a lot of disc golf courses directly on a golf course. And so a little bit of rules of engagement on both sides to let everybody know who's got the right of way. And theoretically, if we were going down the fairways at the exact same time, they should be able to approach as if they were another foursome on the golf. Right, and so nobody get in the way. The challenge is that we've got a couple of holes where, where we're actually throwing across the fairway. So it's a situation like this, it's perpendicular to that. And those are the challenges where we've got to, we've got to have some rules in place. And, and the concept is going to be that, you know, if they are already there, you let them finish, you then play through. And, and we want to kind of create a, a set of rules in a brochure that we hand out to anybody who's unfamiliar with those at the beginning of their round.
That's great. I spoke with my niece's husband, who is a pro disc golfer in the state of Indiana and in Florida. And he said, you know, they're, they don't pay, you know, there are some little minor fees occasionally on some, but tournament fees tend to be between $15 and $25. But they tend to expect, you know, a freebie for that, for that, which would be a, a disc, you know, advertising something. Anyway, you know, I think that's not unusual and I think, I think your idea of the brochure is going to help.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also, I mean, do you, you guys, see, I'm not a golfer, so, but I think it's an important feature in our community. Do you guys sell balls and tees and things at the club out there?
We do. One of the other things that we were talking about was potentially creating, you know, another line item for the promotion side of things to, to kind of go after it on that side.
Because I, I mean, I, I know we have the sports business, I forgot what that's called over there.
Elite?
Yeah, Elite Sports, exactly. And they sell discs, but you know, maybe you could add that into your shop.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we've already got, you know, the golf shirts, the golf things. And there's no reason that, you know, if this agreement comes to fruition, that we couldn't have stuff for the disc golfers as well. And even partner up potentially with the other business in town that's helping to promote that sport.
Devin, in, in some conversations I've had today, you've come back with the, the figure of 20,000. Some of the conversations I've had today, looking at the total bill, I believe is 40,374. We were thinking, get rid of that 11,196 and possibly financing the balance of that. But if you're happy with 20, we're happy.
Let me tell you what, we won't look a gift horse in the mouth and I'll tell you what, we'll take any help that we can get.
I would just throw that out to the commission if you feel comfortable with that. Mr. Berry, is there any issues with that too?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would just look for some guidance from you. Generally, I think the conversation that I've had with Devin is that to, you know, avoid stepping over the line here, we would limit our involvement to capital type purchase, you know, something related to the irrigation system that we would expect would have a 10-year life or greater components that go with that. I think the only, only other issue we looked at is there's potentially a control system here which I think we would offer some technical support to the course. But Water Works has actually participated in, in this control system a few years back. And I think it's just really, I think we're probably okay on that. It's a matter of kind of learning the system which, you know, can be a little bit challenging. But I think we're okay on that. I'm not sure if that's something we, we had talked about at one time, I'm not sure that that's in there. But I think that's more of a, a technical assistance kind of an arrangement here rather than, you know, something that we need to throw more cash at. But I would just look for some guidance from the commission that, you know, these are really limited primarily to, you know, a certain use. And I think we're talking about the, the irrigation system. There is a component that they have brought up where on the putting green reclaimed water cannot be used there. That's not going to really be allowed under a groundwater discharge permit. It would have to be potable water. There probably is some work that needs to be done on that. It's, it's a potable system, but I think it's a, it's a good time to do that as well. So those are a couple of things that Devin and I had talked about. And I don't know if you have some, some comments on that. But I think that's what we had talked about is really the, the, the direct components of the system.
The current putting green, when you, when you first walk out there, is usually one of the first features that you see there. And like it or not, because of the permit that we're currently under, we're not allowed to use that, that water. So unfortunately, that's all watered by hand right now. Certainly with your help, yeah, we could put in a potable water system and get that taken care of and looking good, I think, again, very quickly. In addition to that, the, the, over the years, there have been some deterioration of landscape close to the building and it's less than desirable at this point. And, and we see potentially enhancing that to, you know, spruce the place up, make it look nicer, you know, for, for all of our folks. The other thing is that in terms of the system out there, I think it was originally put in and it's a Cadillac. However, we have not kept up, kept up with the internet updates that go along with it. We have not done some of the infrastructure things that needed to be done. And so we're a little bit behind the times on that and, and it's lagging in terms of what it could potentially do. Theoretically now, a, a single person could run this from their phone, the entire golf course sprinkler system. And not only that, but it's going to give us feedback in terms of how many gallons we're putting down, where we're putting it down, you know, whether it's spraying, whether it's frozen, there's a lot of different things that we could, capabilities that we could potentially do. And, and a lot of those things are included in there. Those are kind of wishlist items and, and what I would consider back burner. But with this kind of help, I mean, that would eliminate a lot of what, what we would consider manual labor right now. And, and ultimately, some of our, our labor costs if we were able to get those kinds of improvements and enhancements done to the system.
Mayor and Commissioner, I maybe just thought on this section A, the one where we're talking about the money, I would suggest that we add the words not to exceed to that dollar amount, whatever the commission's anticipating.
That's what I was just going to suggest, as in if we came up with a.
The, the sentence above, not exceed the cost of.
Well, we'll have to wordsmith that a little bit, but in the dollars to say, you know, if we can accomplish everything we want to accomplish and it's a hair under, you know, the amount that you might anticipate, you know, we're just not going to exceed that, but we're going to accomplish the scope of work that we agree on.
Well, with the, you know, the original was $45,000, which was kind of shocking. And like, the fact is that you came back with just saying 20 now. So, but that leaves it open for a couple of years down here that you can come back. Because if, if we were to say tonight, this is just my opinion, rest of the commission, we're to say, let's give you the full $45,000. You're not, you're not going to get any more from us for a hell of a long time, you know? So, but I think if we could leave the, if we could leave the door open to that thing, the 20,000, or like Neil said, I'd even go for that, do away with the frivolous type things that we thought about that. That's just, that's just how I look at it.
The other thing is too, I, we're going to try and partner with the city a little bit because obviously with your own sprinkler systems, a lot of the people who work within the city water department have some real expertise in that area and guidance and experience that we intend to rely on. So things like a warranty that does not make sense, we're going to defer a little bit and we're going to employ some of the folks that are already in place to say, hey, does, is this something that we should be doing out there? So in other words, it's not just my board, it's our board also coming down to the city and saying, what do you think about this? So folks like Dan and Jason are, we really expect them to be integral in our, in our planning.
And you get somebody trained up on the system so that it's perfect and.
Well, and ideally, we'd like, you know, we, we trained somebody up on that, but now he's retired and so now we're kind of in this spot. What we'd like to do is train up two or three people so that we've got some, some training that we can carry on.
What if we considered a amount like 25,000? That puts us closer to without the 11, right, just a few thousand shy of that, but it's still not 40 some thousand.
I would go for that. That originally, they did ask for the 25, the onset instead of 20, so. But I was awfully concerned going up the 45 and I said that. I don't think that we could use the promotional funds for that.
Well, it sounds like we're limiting it specifically to parts that have a 10-year lifespan.
Well, you can guarantee a 10-year lifespan on it, you know that.
Well, and the other, the other thing though, that, that I would be interested in is, is your take on, on being able to utilize a, a general contractor or one of our relationships that we've already got. So, you know, the challenge of course is if we put the labor in and we do all that, yes, it's a little bit less expensive, but we're not necessarily under any warranty, okay? Whereas if we get a contractor in there, something goes wrong, now I can get them on the phone and say, hey, you got a breakout here, let's make something happen. And if I were able to use a subcontractor, even though we're in the, in the height of irrigation, they will follow her backwards to help a golf course, if that makes sense. And, and that may be something that could make some, some sense long-term in, in terms of being able to provide some longevity to this system.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I'd like to see somebody putting this system in that actually knows what they're doing. Not to say you guys don't.
Yeah, we, we've got some great workers, but it, it's one of those things too where this isn't necessarily their primary job. Okay. So is, we are open to that, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that open, that's going to be an additional cost?
No, that was the thing is, is, you know, whether our guys do it or they do it, the, the labor rate is, is going to be there. It's just a matter of, you know, if you're approving nothing but parts, then, then I've got to come out of pocket for the labor. On the other hand, if we're, if we're talking about being able to approve these contractors, they're going to come in and, and give us a bid overall, at which point I'm going to say, here, here's what we've got. And, and again, before we even do that, I'm going to work with Dan, Jason, everybody to, to make sure that we've got an agreement that this makes sense, this is what we need to do.
Mr. Berry, you have any issues with that?
I do not. I think that's a, that's a wise move. I think that, you know, professional services, contractor services, that's, that's something we want to see. And so I think that's in bounds and, you know, if you count with a dollar figure, we kind of got, you know, I think pretty good guidance to finish up this agreement and, and move forward, so.
Well, I know time is of the essence because it's irrigation time, so. I agree with the 25.
Commissioner, January's 25, sure.
Sure, you go ahead and, I can try to put this motion together. I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve that memorandum of agreement between the City of Rattone and the Rattone Country Club for $25,000, which could go towards contractor services or parts, and with the revisions to the different items that we discussed tonight, under the direction of the city manager.
And I would just add, if you could, not to exceed portion, and we understand that, then we'll draw it up.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of agreement between Rattone Country Club and the City of Rattone with all the pertinent corrections and additions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Look, I just want to tell you, Devin, that thank you for doing this. We asked you to put together some numbers, and you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. We really appreciate your support.
You know, this was work getting this all together.
I would say this is the most cooperation I've seen between the city and the country club.
We're excited, and we appreciate the help. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Alrighty. Item G, deliberate and act on board appointment of planning and zoning commission. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have recently had a number of actions that require deliberation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got a number of pieces of business, so we will be holding a meeting on April 18th. We haven't had a meeting for a few months there, and we don't currently have a designated zoning official. So myself and our fire chief and our deputy fire chief are all kind of teaming up on this at this point. But we have had a resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have asked for folks to step forward and consider sitting on the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is typically a difficult board to fill, not really... It's interesting, but not necessarily their funnest board. However, we do have one application, which is in your packet, and it was submitted by Dee Burke. So Dee, thank you very much for the application. So we have one application, and we have one seat open, and we are getting ready to convene a meeting.
So what are you saying?
To make a motion to approve, Ms. Dee Burke, for the application of the planning and zoning. Thank you for it.
It's not going to be boring anymore.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further... All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dee. Deliberate and act on bid award for Brilliant Street, Hart Avenue Resurfacing Project. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor and Commissioner, on Brilliant Street and Hart Avenue, you will remember that we have completed replacement of a water line, and the water line is a line that was of steel construction. It is more than 50 years of age, and steel suffers from corrosion after it's been in the ground for that long. So we've definitely had some issues with that water line. Rattone Water Works has undertaken that project and completed replacement of that with a brand-new system. And of course, in the process of replacing the water line and the service lines, that's really had a detrimental effect on those two streets. So you also remember that we have worked with New Mexico DOT. We submitted an application for cooperative agreement funding sometime back. That agreement was approved. The agreement came to the commission, and we agreed to perform the construction and provide our part of the funding. And that agreement was for $100,000, which is 75% DOT funds and 25% local funds. Source of our funds is the gas tax, which is designated for street improvements. However, really fix Brilliant and Hart Avenue to a first-class condition is our estimate was closer to $200,000. And so we did talk to Rattone Water Works. Rattone Water Works will participate in the reconstruction of the street because it has been impacted by utility operations. So our estimate was around $200,000. We did receive a couple of bids. At this point, I'm going to call our public works director to come forward and talk about details of the bid process, what we have seen out of that, and then where we're at on the project now. So Jason Phillips.
Mayor and Commissioner, thank you. As Mr. Berry said, we did do a still bid process and opened those bids. We had three plan holders, of which two responded with bid documents. One was not able to submit a bid in a timely manner and were not part of the process. I've attached a tabulation of bids for you where you can see the individual pricing. The bid process took into account the fact that we had a base bid schedule and then a number of alternative items that were part of an alternative bid schedule. At this point, after reviewing the numbers, looking at the bid amounts that we've got, Mr. Berry and I both agree that it's a pretty competitive bid. The pricing's close enough to the estimate where we think it's worth warranting completion of the whole project. So tonight, we would like to request award of this project to Northern Mountain Constructors, and the amount of award would be $196,640. That is the base bid plus the alternate bid items minus gross receipts tax, including gross receipts tax. The project will jump to $212,903.70.
Alrighty, thank you, Jason. Any comments, questions? Mr. Berry or Mr. Phillips?
To make a motion to approve bid award for North Brilliant Street, Hart Avenue Resurfacing Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the award for the reconstruction of Brilliant and Hart Avenue. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You better just stay right there for the next one.
Up next, yeah.
Let me get there. Deliberate and act on bid award for annual contract to perform on-call excavation and drainage maintenance work. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Mayor?
I'll just turn it over to Mr. Phillips here, Mayor.
Mayor and Commissioner, as you know, most routine drainage and excavation-type tasks are performed by city staff. We have a well-equipped street department that handles most of those needs, but we do from time to time find some specialty work that is better suited for contractors. As you can see, we've bid a fairly low-dollar placeholder-type of annual contract for things like placing Reno mattresses, gabions, and some of the associated equipment by the hour that would help us install those. We also have a placeholder item for an 18-inch culvert, and from time to time, we've identified some of these smaller drainage projects that we'd like to fix, and often the best time to do that is to pick a time that's a little slow for us and work on them, or if we're in a hurry, to get some help from a contractor. So we've identified a few drainage issues that we would like to knock out in the next little bid here with some of these special skills. Our low bidder on this project is RW Buck Construction. They've been around forever, done a lot of work in the past for us, and the base amount of the award is $11,900. It is an annual contract that's renewable by mutual agreement of both parties for several years going forward. It just sets the prices for some work that we anticipate we'll need and that we know we need, and it gives us a framework to change order in some items if we need to, if the need arises. So at this time, I would recommend award to RW Buck Construction in the amount of $11,900 plus gross receipts tax, and we'd gladly stand for any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
To make a motion to approve the contract to perform on-call excavation and drainage maintenance work to RW Buck Construction.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
That was an enthusiastic second.
To award the contract to RW Buck Construction, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would just like to report the loud breaking glass sound was a dropped proclamation, and not a big deal, we're already covered. Thank you all.
Item G, deliberate and act on dispatch agreement between City of Rattone and the Village of Simroon. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a dispatch agreement that we are renewing. We have had in place with the Village of Simroon for a number of years. You'll see that the term is anticipated to be two years, and the annual sum would be $14,000. That's the sum that the Village of Simroon would pay to the City of Rattone for providing dispatch services, and we have an agreement similar to this in place with a lot of the local entities where the City of Rattone will dispatch for entities in our area. The cost to the City of Rattone of operating a dispatch center exceeds $350,000 annually. I would say that the Simroon contract is a lower volume, and we typically would look at volumes of calls in relationship to the fee. And you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had adjusted a couple of those, but I think that this is probably a good level for the Village of Simroon and recommend approval.
Alrighty, any questions for Mr. Berry?
To approve a green dispatch agreement between the City of Rattone and Village of Simroon.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the Village of Simroon, Simroon and City of Rattone Dispatch Agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item H, deliberate and act on introduction of an ordinance, Amendment Ordinance 995, Chapter 90, animals. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, you'll remember several years ago, there was a significant revision to the animal control ordinance. There was a lengthy review period of that. There were some significant changes to that. However, the section that we bring to you tonight for revision was not included in that revision. This has really not been changed for the long term, and this would be a section of the code that deals with rabies vaccinations required by animal owners. And so there arose an issue with municipal court where the existing ordinance, and I believe, Commissioners, you have a copy of the existing ordinance in front of you, would reference that if the owner of a pet failed to get a rabies vaccination for that pet, that would constitute a misdemeanor. And that wording, that that violation would constitute a misdemeanor, raised an issue with municipal court, who said they were not able to hear a case that involved a misdemeanor that would have to be referred to magistrate court or another court. So I think that way back when, when that was adopted by the commission, decades ago, they wanted to emphasize that the failure to vaccinate for rabies was a serious concern. Nowhere else is misdemeanor mentioned in the animal control ordinance, but all citations that have been issued recently under the animal control ordinance have been dismissed by municipal court over this issue. So the municipal judge and the city attorney have met over the past couple of months, and what you see in front of you is a revision that was drafted by the city attorney, and we are looking at an introduction of an ordinance that would replace that section relating to penalties for failure to vaccinate an animal for rabies. One thing I would point out to the commission that the revision says every person convicted of a violation of provisions of 90.107 rabies vaccination required, and then it goes on to talk about the punishment. In the existing ordinance, it has similar wording, but it references a violation of 90.105, and I think we would want to revise that back to 90.105. And so you have that section there in your packet, 90.105, and I would recommend that we introduce the revision with 90.105 added.
So move. This is, remember, we're just introducing...
This is just introducing this ordinance right now.
So we make it... Chavez has made the motion to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2019-21, acceptance of debit, credit cards, or electronic means for payment of utilities and related services.
Mayor and Commissioner, up until this point, the City of Rattone has not been able to accept payment through debit card or credit cards or other forms of electronic payment. And so we have met with various departments of the city, and we're trying to ease into that because that's really the way that society works today, and we've got some comments that, from some of the customers of the utilities, that they would prefer to have an electronic payment option that they have not had up till now. So this is going to be a multiple-step process. Both Rattone Water Works and Rattone Public Service Company have worked on this process, done many steps. They're close to implementation of that as far as city payment areas, and that may consist of municipal court, the library, the aquatic center, maybe others. We will follow up at a later time with that option, so we are really working with the utilities, trying to implement this at the utilities. And as part of that process would be this resolution that you have in front of you, policy for the acceptance of debit or credit cards or electronic means for payment of City of Rattone services. So you will see details of that policy in your packet. We still have some timeframe before full implementation, but implementation at this time will consist of the ability to accept that electronic payment at Rattone Water Works and Rattone Public Service.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'm happy to see us moving forward on this.
Absolutely.
To make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-21, acceptance of debit and credit cards or electronic means for payment of utilities and related services.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-21. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate and act on Better City LLC Economic Development Services Contract Spoke Adjustment and Associated Costs. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the status report on Better City, that's the consultant that the commission had retained for evaluation and recommendations and development of a plan as far as economic development in the community. Better City has submitted a draft report. I have forwarded that to you by electronic means. It's a rather lengthy report. You see a lot of their analysis of the community that resulted from their review of documentation as well as their field trip to Rattone and their interaction with citizens, businesses in Rattone, community partners, not-for-profits, people that have programs going. So you have that. You have a lot of the community demographics in that report, and you have some recommendations in the report. And to kind of skip to the summary of the recommendations, Better City is noting that Rattone has significant opportunities as far as economic development based on their track record of working at other communities. I think they were excited about the opportunities here in Rattone, that we have some real opportunities, and they have adjusted their recommendations to... And they have adjusted their recommendations to you based on their observations, their findings of that report, and suggested a plan for moving forward. So Better City is proposing now some additional services. And none of these additional services, that would involve coming back to Raton, spending more time in Raton, working with the city as far, and other groups that are involved in economic development, as far as setting up committees to work on certain focus areas that they see as being strategic going forward. And so that would be a step that they're proposing to you is some more organization that way, some development of that focused committee approach. And you see a additional scope of work proposal for Better Cities under which they are laying out that option, but it does consist of additional costs and additional services. And I believe that the total of these additional services come to about $30,000. So that's significant additional services. Then I will let the commission have a discussion of our options going forward with this. And I think there's a couple of things that we can do. Better Cities has pointed out that really for the community of Raton to realize the success with economic development, we have to make one fundamental change, and that would be we have to find a recurring revenue source and fund economic development. Now, a lot of New Mexico communities have an increment of grocery receipts tax that they would dedicate to economic development. That would fund either staff within the city or an economic development organization that would work on economic development full-time. And that really is a recommendation that Better Cities is giving to you, is that we would need that full-time work and we would need to find a way to fund that. And so that's something that we're going to talk about our options. I think that myself and the city clerk, we would look at bringing a, an increment of grocery receipts tax option to the commission relatively quickly for your consideration to attempt to fund economic development opportunities. And in the future, if we have that revenue source, we'd have an easier way to fund services like this in addition to staff services or in addition to economic development activities. We would have a way to fund those. Up till now, we have, we had some funds designated for economic development, but in addition, we've gone to reserves for additional funding. So this is a decision for the commission and a discussion here on timing on this, on steps that we take going forward, on whether we want to, you know, how we might fund something like this if we choose to, to consider it and go forward. So with that, Mayor, I'll hold up, I'll answer any questions that you have, but you have the proposal in front of you. I would make one comment that I have scheduled a phone call with Better City later in the week to kind of discuss this plan for going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any comments or questions for Mr. Berry at this time?
I had some concerns just about the cost. I mean, the original contract we awarded was, I pulled it up, you know, with the $48,000, and so with an additional 30, because they're taking out, they're using some of those funds towards us, and that it's, this is at 78, just over 78,000, which seems like a lot. I guess my questions are, how, I think we all feel that economic development is extremely important and we need to act on it as soon as we can. However, can educational sessions and the development summit, can it wait? Or is it so timely that we need to spend the money now? I guess that's my biggest question. Can it wait until we have a dedicated funding source and possibly a full-time employee? Or is it something we need to act on now? And I don't know that I have the answer, but that's just my concern.
The, the way to fund this with receipts is that quarter cent increment, or what is that?
We would bring an option for the consideration of the commission to dedicate a quarter cent increment to economic development. I would tell you that that would generate, under currently what we see, an excess of $200,000 a year, probably closer to 225 to 250,000 annually, which would be now then available for economic development.
Well, according to this, I think that they have, that they want to get it started as fast as they can.
As they can.
And the training, I would like to see it go forward.
What are the time constraints? Are they extending the timeframe that they will work with us? Do they expect to be cashed off?
They are talking about if this is approved by the commission, schedule a return trip in early May, I think is what we're looking at now, possibly that first week of May, and really fulfill the scope of work that you see in the, in the proposal out in front of you fairly quickly.
I think we've gained a little bit of momentum from their visit. Everyone I've heard from has thanked us for moving in this direction. It's something that's been desperately needed in this community. And I mean, we had with a businessman yesterday, I believe it was, Mr. Berry, I can't remember, but his, he was very excited that we've gotten Better Cities involved. I would hate to see that momentum slow down. I think that's been one of the things that has bogged Raton in years past, is you get some momentum going, then all of a sudden, something comes up where you have to pump the brakes and we lose that momentum. So I would be willing to move forward myself.
I would add one thing. Earlier in the budget hearing, we talked about the concern of recurring costs, especially personnel costs that you have, you know, from then on. And we're really not talking about that here as, you know, even though it's additional services, it still constitutes a one-time expense and we probably have some flexibility if the commission chooses to go forward with that, where it's not the large concern that we expressed with the recurring costs.
Any other comments, questions?
Be in favor, move forward also.
And Mr. Berry, I'm assuming this would be coming from reserves?
It wouldn't come from reserves, Mayor, and I think that you would see a budget resolution, budget adjustment coming in the near future where, and, you know, something that is budgeted at one-time cost, there's probably a trade-off involved here. There's a number of those that we've kind of held in abeyance to see how things are going. And the way things are going, you know, we, we probably would hold back on some other expenses. So I think we would, we'd have to talk about what that looks like, but I think you would see that in a, in a bar very quickly.
In terms of scheduling the educational sessions, which I know are geared for the commission, and it looks like it's 12 to 18 hours of training, because they said two to three hours per, and there's six of them on there, are we looking at during the week, weekends, or just thinking of, trying to get us all?
Yeah, I think I'll have to really nail that down with each of you and do, put a little planning into this before we finalize that. So I think I'll talk to Better City, we'll find out about the outcome of their request tonight. We'll, you know, start to, to talk about the possibilities. I'll check with each one of you. Also, Michael Ann, we'll see if other things may be on the schedule and we'll try to put it together. But we do anticipate early May.
I'm going to be gone for a week in early May.
Okay.
Six through the 11th. And then I've been called for jury duty. And then that starts May 7th, or May somewhere around the 17th.
Well.
So I'm just thinking.
Right now, it's wide open. I think it's important that we try to schedule everyone, you know.
Yeah, because I would like to be involved.
Absolutely. I think we look at a time when it's good for everyone. And of course, Better City, I think they'll conform to, to your schedule.
They should.
Well, I will move to approve the Economic Development Services Contract Scope Adjustment and Associated Costs with Better City LLC.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the cost adjustment. Better Cities LLC.
Mayor, and if I could, I'll, I will just say that they, their total is $30,375.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to add any, leaving it in your hands or?
Uh, yes, that's probably, that probably would be good.
Given Mr. Berry the authority.
The authority to move forward.
Is that good with you?
Absolutely.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the contract with, well, to approve the scope of work option with Better Cities LLC and given Mr. Berry the authority to make such decisions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I approve.
Motion carries, thank you.
I'll just turn the aye.
Item K deliberate an act on CYFD Juvenile Justice Grant FY19 Budget Adjustment Number One. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we are requesting a budget adjustment for our juvenile justice program. And you'll see under the justification that we would be moving $5,500 from the Boys Council Program to the Girls Circle Sessions, and this would allow us enough monies to continue to serve the referrals provided from the schools. So we currently have more of a need in the Girls Circle Programs. So this program will run through June 30th of this fiscal year. This is the only budget adjustment that we anticipate, and this should be enough to get them through the end of the fiscal year.
This is a great program, I think. So I'll move to approve CYMD Juvenile Justice Grant FY19 Budget Adjustment Number One.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve the budget adjustment number one for the juvenile justice grant for fiscal year 19. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deliberate an act on resolution 2019-22, city of Raton, fiscal year 19, budget adjustment number 13. Mr., Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do have a budget adjustment and it is number 13. We just completed the, end of the third quarter, so probably the next meeting, I'll have another budget adjustment once I've completed the bank reconciliations and the financial reports for the third quarter. But I am proposing some line item adjustments and also to adjust our small cities assistance revenue to reflect the actual amount that was received. At this time, we are not allocating that to any specific expenses, other probably to cover the shortfall in our grocery receipts for the fiscal year. Other than that, we did approve at the last meeting the Homeland Security Grant, and that was for the protective clothing and radiation detection equipment, so I'm adding that into the budget. And then also, we did approve an additional debt payment to NMFA in years past. That's always been applied to the 2007 loan, but we did find out this year that the 2009 loan was callable, and so we have applied the full $150,000 additional debt payment to that 2009 loan, but we had previously budgeted it, so I'm just reallocating that to the correct line item for that 2009 loan. And other than that, I believe that's it. Is there any questions?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2019-22, the budget adjustment number 13.
I'll second. Motion and a second to approve resolution 2019-22, budget adjustment number 13, fiscal year 19. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, Mr. Berry, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I want to report to the commission on the status of some construction that we've talked about previously. You'll recall that we awarded construction of the Taxiway Alpha Reconstruction Project Phase Two back late in 2018, and then we agreed to a winter shutdown of that project. And I would report to the commission that the contractor, Northern Mountain Construction, started construction of that Phase Two of Taxiway Alpha on Monday. So that project will consist of the reconstruction of the remaining part of Taxiway Alpha. You recall that several years ago, we reconstructed about one-third of Taxiway Alpha, leaving two-thirds of that taxiway. That will all be completed now under Phase Two. Taxiway Alpha is the taxiway that is parallel to our primary runway 220. We anticipate the construction will be completed within 60 days if we do not have any weather issues. Additionally, Mayor and Commissioner, we started construction of the Raton Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project. That's something that we have talked about for a while. That contractor, RMCI, has been on the site about 10 days. We would anticipate that construction will run through the rest of 2019 and then could very well run into 2020 by several months. That is a significant reconstruction of some important components to the water treatment plant. And of course, the complicated thing there is we still have to run the plant and produce water while construction is going on. So that involves a little tap dancing, which we have a good contractor, we think we have a good team on that, and that is an important project that we've worked on for a while. Tomorrow, I will attend the New Mexico Municipal League District Meeting along with most of you. As we said earlier in the agenda, that will be held in Las Vegas tomorrow from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock. The primary purpose of that meeting, we will hear a legislative report from the New Mexico Municipal League. I think that is particularly important in 2019 because there was some interesting legislation that had passed during this last 60-day session. Some of that, we have some concerns about, some of that could be beneficial to Raton. And we go down and we, we get, we're going to ask questions about that legislation. We get information, Municipal League is particularly skilled at following that legislation and what that means, the consequences of that legislation for municipalities. We'll particularly look at some of the tax bills that passed and were signed by the governor. Those could have some implications for Raton. We will not put the cart before the horse and, and talk about what those consequences would be for Raton, but I think we will be talking about that as we go along. So we'll learn about, a lot about that there tomorrow. And then lastly, Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to recognize Fred Sparks. Fred Sparks was a longtime resident of Raton that recently passed away. Fred was a former Raton City Commissioner, former mayor of Raton. After he left the Raton City Commission, Fred continued to work on, for on the behalf of the community through the regional economic development activities and remained active in that. Fred was, was an enthusiastic supporter of our local railroad assets, and Fred envisioned an expanded use of passenger rail and freight, freight rail in the future and was very active in our communications with BNSF and is really instrumental in this partnership that we have on the renovation of the depot. That was an idea that. was an idea that Fred came to the city with in 2014, and now, after only five short years, it looks like we'll get that buttoned up. So, I want to recognize the efforts of Fred Sparks and all of his contributions to Rattone. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry? Just one question, Scott. You know, we kind of talked about construction projects at the municipal airport, being city-owned, and the way we were reading that new law. Just don't forget to ask that question tomorrow.
So, that's an important one, and just to summarize it, we understand in House Bill Six, it clarifies that the municipality can collect a municipal share of grocery receipts tax on property owned by the municipality that is not within the municipal boundaries. So, that would apply here to construction at Rattone Airport or Lake Malloya. It could, it could apply to any commercial activity, but we generally think of construction. And so, I would, I think that's of particular interest. I would guess that that will go into effect July 1st. Of course, we'll be done with construction at Taxiway Alpha, but we hope to have other construction going at municipal airport shortly.
Possible hanger in the future?
Yes.
Yeah, I just didn't want us to forget that, because in that bill, it specifically pointed out airports as an example.
I think it's very clear, and it's something that Rattone has asked for since I was on the Commission in the 1990s, and it makes sense, and that's, that's a good provision for us. We feel good about that.
All right, any other questions? We are adjourned.